Hello, I'm Jay Germaine Bay with Alonium Wars Parade on Anti Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC. I am the Chief Cause, Chief Judge of Consular Court. So today is Class 15, Class 15. What did we learn in Class 14? Well, one of the first things that we learned is that Moors are not refugees. Moors are just simply stateless people, right? According to international law. What else did we learn? We learned that Nobedra Ali had already brought us everything to save a nation, and all we had to do was just take it. Take it for ourselves, right? But the only way to do that is to start coming to the consciousness of nationality and then start understanding statehood. What does international law say in terms of how you can make a proper claim to your sovereignty under what's called post dominium per consanguinity? So among all Moors must start understanding how do we get back into the proper status? And what we can join the United Nations of all nations around the world as sovereign people of our own state, right? Understanding that divinity per our consanguinity, we're already a nation. Our bloodline already says that we already have a status of the people. But everything now is based upon political documents. You must be able to put on the table your state of facts. That's called your discovery documents, right? And under your discovery documents, these are your exhibits that now you can take to the international communities, i.e. the Secretary General of the United Nations, and say, "Listen, we're putting on the record our statehood within our own land that represents our e-state, that represents our jurisdiction, our de jour jurisdiction, and not a de facto jurisdiction." And in order to have a de jour jurisdiction now, you must add your consanguinity along with your political documents. That is the instructions for all Moors to understand, alright? So what I have up on the board today, being Class 15, is another statement. This is an oral statement and prophecies of Prophet Nobedra Ali. "Shik Sharif Abdul Ali to the Moors," right? It says, "I'm going to leave the Europeans here just long enough to teach you how to run a government." What are the key words here? To run a government, to run a government, to run a government. Nobedra Ali came to us in 1913. He was assassinated July 20th of 1929. It's been nearly 100 years or one over 100 years since he came on the scene. And what have Moors done to start running their governments? What type of governments? Moors governments. The answer is hardly nothing. The answer is, Moors are claiming that they have governments, but the reality is, you have a de facto government. You have a de facto government if in fact you haven't checked these boxes according to international law, alright? So we must all understand, we gotta get back into proper status. That what we can be fully recognized per our consanguinity and our nationality of our constitution that creates the state. That is our obligation, alright? So as we continuously talk about Nobedra Ali and his prophecy, was for us to start running governments. So let's now, in the year 2021 and beyond, start running Moors governments and create the states. It's as simple as that, alright? So if Nobedra Ali is saying we should run our governments, well, first things first, how can you run a government if you're stateless people? Stateless people mean you don't have a state. In order to have a government, which means you have a constitution, because Nobedra Ali taught constitution principles. If you have a constitution which creates the state, but yet you're stateless, well, how can you run a government if you're stateless? You can't, which means you're not abiding by the prophecies of Nobedra Ali. You're not abiding by the international community based upon them putting on the record the Vienna Convention of 1969, that all nationals around the world must be affiliated to a state and through the state you have your sovereign authority. Other than that, you're called self-appointed and stateless. That's the truth. So now we have to start querying this down. We have to query it down to only two classifications of Moors. Moors nationals of a state or stateless Moors who are citizens of the United States. That's it, Moors. Only two classifications. Moors should be done talking about Negro blacks and colors. Moors should not even be talking about nationality anymore. What we should be talking about at the next step, what's the next step? Next step is to run a government. And only way to run a government, we must have a state. So let's talk about statehood versus stateless Moors. Moors are stateless if they don't have a government. So what are we constantly talking about? We're talking about status. We're going to be repetitive about the word status. Your status is a Moors national of a state or you are a stateless Moor of the United States. That's it. We're talking status. Let's get into some more germane understanding about what it means to put together a government. Keeping in mind, we're keeping in unison with what Nobedra Ali says. "I'm going to leave the Europeans here." Why? Just long enough to teach us Moors how to run a government. So let's learn a little bit from George Washington about government, but more specifically, what was George Washington and the colonists' true status? We're talking status, right? So we're being redundant. George Washington, as we scroll down, here's what George Washington said. George Washington said... Okay, here's what George Washington said. George Washington said, "The encouragements with your majesty have been pleased generously to give to our commerce with your dominions." What does that mean when George Washington said that? He's saying that Sidi Mohamed gave the colonists refuge in Morocco. Dominions is land. So the colonists were seeking asylum and refuge in Morocco, and Sidi Mohamed allowed them, through his authority, through a pen, allowed the colonists to stay in the land. Let's go on down to this section. "The United States of America have confirmed their respects for the attachment to your imperial majesty." What is George Washington saying there? He's saying that the colonists, 13 colonists, have confirmed their respect. And attachment to the imperial majesty, what's the imperial majesty? Morocco, the land, the dominions. Not the emperor himself, it's to the dominions of the land. So the colonists have come in seeking refuge. They've come in seeking asylum, and Sidi Mohamed, a Moroccan, has allowed them to stay in the land of Morocco. So now the colonists are attachment to the dominions of Morocco. They come under the protections of Moroccans. Let's get down. Highlight it. Between your Sharif and Moors empire and the citizens of the United States of America, what's this mean? Between your Sharif and Moors empire, between your empire specifically. So the colonists have come into Morocco and to the empire of Morocco. Moors must start understanding, we never left home. The colonists came into our home. We gave the colonists refuge. We gave them asylum in our land. And then we signed a bilateral treaty, which created a cohabitating contract between Moors and citizens of the United States of America Republic, okay? He says, "May the Almighty bless your imperial majesty, our great and magnanimous friend, with his constant guidance and protection." When we started reading about stateless persons in international law, we learned that refugees are seeking protections in someone else's land. You must understand that the British, i.e. George Washington and his descendants, before him and after him, were seeking asylum and refuge in Morocco, under what protections? Moroccan protections. So it's the colonists that are refugees still to this very day, because the treaties have never changed. They're in full force. The colonists are still under protections of what? The treaties. That's what protects them, the treaties. And who protects the treaties? The sovereigns on both sides of the parties. So to this very day in the year 2021, we must understand that colonists are the refugees in our land. They crossed over a border and stepped into Morocco. And they don't want to go back to Great Britain. They went to war with Great Britain. That's just how they wanted to stay here in the land. That confirmed, that qualifies the fact they never wanted to go back. They went to war with their own homeland. So we must always understand. To this very day, Morocco has always been Morocco. But what happened is, the colonists started changing the books. The colonists told us that they got us from Africa. They told us that we were refugees in our own homeland. So once they started hiding the books through reconstruction, then they changed the books to change the narrative. We started thinking that we're from somewhere else, so we're not home. So we must be refugees in this land. Total misconception. But you must understand what the colonists did. It's labeled under what's called index laborum prohibitorum. Index laborum prohibitorum. What does that mean? That's the hiding of the books. That's preventing Moors from being able to read and write to learn about their own said ancient history, okay? We must understand it. Matter of fact, let's look up the definition of the word. Here we go. Index laborum prohibitorum. Mother, if you could read that, please?
Index laborum prohibitorum. List of prohibited books. Was a list of publications deemed heretical or contrary to morality by the sacred congregation of the index, a Roman Curia and Catholics were forbidden to read them without permission. There were attempts to ban heretical books before the 16th century, notably in the 19th century. In the 9th century, Decretum Glacianum, the Index of Prohibited Books of 1560, banned thousands of book titles and blacklisted publications, including the works of Europe's intellectual elites. The 20th and final edition of the index appeared in 1948, and the index was formally abolished on June 14th, 1966 by Pope Paul VI.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mother. So what's happening here? You must understand, under the secret treaty of Verona, under doctrines of discovery, under unum sanctum policies, the best way to oppress people is to remove them from literature. All it takes is about one or two generations to remove people from self. And you can create a narrative for those people. You can tell a lie to them over and over again, and all of a sudden that lie becomes a truth. It is very difficult to defeat a near-perfect lie. So you must understand, if you hear the United States of America referring to us as refugees, that's fraud. Because the reality is, they hid knowledge from Moors, and they hid knowledge from their own. You see right here? Where they start talking about including the works of the Europe's intellectual elites? The Europeans, who were scholars, were writing about the Moors. But the Roman Curia, the church and the states decided to hide literature about Moors, because Moors created all humanity on planet Earth. Moors are the ones who built all these museums, these massive churches that you see all around the world, all the pyramids you see around the world, all the mounds you see around the world, all the megalithic stones and art of facts, artifacts, art of facts that you see around the world. That is the proof and qualified proof that Moors have been here for thousands of years, millennium. So you must understand, now that Moors are coming back into the consciousness and getting access to literature, we must always understand well-settled principles to start really going back and using discernment to get an understanding, overstanding and interstanding on what we're reading. We must learn how to read now to comprehend, use forensics, okay? So just understand that a lot of literature was hidden from us. We've been indoctrinated to think that we're refugees, and we are not. We've always been home. Let's underscore a little bit more about George Washington. Why are we doing this? Because Nobedra Ali says, "I'm going to leave the Europeans here just long enough to teach you, Moors, how to run a government." So we're learning from George Washington about government. We're also going to learn from George Washington that he himself is admitting that he's a refugee, as well as who is he coming to to petition all the time? Moors. More specifically, Moors governments, alright? Okay, Mother. So this right here is a letter from George Washington to the Sultan of Morocco. Keep in mind, I'll give you a quick brief. When George Washington sent his first letter in 1789, he sent his first letter in December 1789, December 1st, 1789, to Sidi Mohamed. But unfortunately, Sidi Mohamed, within two years, transitioned. He died. And what happens? Sidi Mohamed's son takes over as king. Sidi Mohamed's son takes over, and George Washington is concerned. He's like, "Man, what if the son won't honor the treaty?" Well, why would George Washington be concerned if the son don't honor the treaty? If in fact, George Washington and the colonists are claiming that they owned the land? It's because George Washington at that time understood the power of contracts. George Washington understood, they didn't want to go back home to Great Britain. They didn't want to stay in the land under the protectory status of Moors governments. So now George Washington's going to petition the new king of the empire. Go ahead, Mother.
Excuse me, so they couldn't do that without a treaty?
Correct.
Okay, so they had to keep that contract in place?
Yes. So why is he so concerned if there's a treaty in place? Because that's how powerful Moors governments are. They can easily by the swipe of a hand, remove a contract. Why? Let's talk about this. Aren't contracts contracts? Yes. Let me give you an analogy. You understand that colonists are living in our homeland. Let's take for instance, you're in a house, right? You got a three-car garage. And someone petitions, say, "Hey, I'd like to convert your three-car garage into a barber shop or a hair salon." And you say, "Okay." That person, "Yeah, I'm gonna pay you some rent. Let me build it out and make it nice, and I'm gonna have my clients come by." It's no longer a three-car garage, it's turned into a beauty salon. But guess what? Y'all signed a contract. So you're the operator now, operating a beauty salon out of someone else's three-car garage that's been converted into a beauty salon. But therefore, if you're the owner of the beauty salon, but you don't own the house, the owner of the house can at any time take said contract and say, "You know, I don't want to play this game no more. I'm going to revoke the contract. I'm going to remand the contract." Why? Because the person doesn't have to, they don't have to honor the contract because you're inside their house. And if you're inside that house, that's private property. So here's what you gotta understand. George Washington, even though he had a treaty, he was concerned about the new king of Morocco taking that treaty and ripping it up, saying, "Man, I don't care about that treaty." Guess why? You gotta understand. Because the colonists are not sovereign to the man. They can be exiled at any time. Plus, you gotta understand, at that time, there was no League of Nations, there was no United Nations, there was no countries coming together to enforce said treaties. It was all based upon good faith. So you have to understand, George Washington was overly concerned. We're gonna learn that in this letter. So let's learn a little bit more about what George Washington's concerns are and how he's petitioning the king once again. Keep in mind, he wrote this letter in December 1789. Now we can already learn the next letter that he wrote. March 1791. So we're talking about two years and three months later, he's writing another letter. Two years and three months later, okay? Mother, if you want to go ahead and read, then I'll do my interpretations.
"From George Washington to the Emperor of Morocco, 31 March 1791. Great and magnanimous friend, separated by an immense ocean from the more ancient nations of the earth and little connected with their politics or proceedings, we are late in learning the events which took place among them and later in conveying to them our sentiments thereon. The death of the late emperor your father and our friend of glorious memory is one of those events which though distant attracts our notice and concern. Receive, great and good friend, my sincere sympathy with you on that loss and permit me at the same time to express the satisfaction with which I learn the accession of so worthy a successor to the imperial throne of Morocco and to offer you the homage of my sincere congratulations. May the days of your majesty's life be many and glorious and may they ever mark the era during which a great people shall have been have been most prosperous and happy under the best and happiest of sovereigns."
Alright, let's go back and interpret exactly what is George Washington saying to the landlord of Morocco, okay? Separated by an immense ocean from the more ancient nations. So right there and there, we learn in reading the definition of Moor in the etymology dictionary, that Moor means ancient. George Washington's admitting on the record, Moors are ancient, and that our nation is ancient. What does that mean immediately if George Washington is saying this in 1791, that he recognized that the Moors had government already in place? So of the ancient nations of the earth, their earth. So he recognized Moors empire is vast. And little connected with their politics or proceedings. Little connected with their politics or proceedings. Wait a minute. So George Washington said, he thought all that connected to all the Moors governments because we're separate nations. What the colonists were doing in their government had nothing to do with de jour of Moors governments. We had two separate nations. So he's learning, because he had nothing to do with Moors governments who had their separate governments going on. That's why you see all these fancy capital buildings all around North America, that they've turned into museums, or they moved into a capital, saying they built the capital, they put their own packet on it like they built it. Moors had all that stuff in place. Those limestone buildings, those are Moors buildings already. Practicing politics and proceedings. So Moors already had politics going on before the colonists ever set up government. They learned government from Moors. We are late in learning the events which take place among them. So who's the them? He's talking about Moors. He's telling you right there, there's a separation going.
Ancient nations, the Moors nations.
Mm-hmm. And later in conveying, "To them are sentiments thereon." So there, George Washington finds out Sidi Mohamed is dead, and he's like, "What? The landlord is dead? Do you know what we've gone through as colonists to be able to stay in this land? We even fought Great Britain. We'd have fought the French, we've fought the Spanish, we've done all this to finally solidify a treaty with the landlord, and the landlord died? Wait a minute. I gotta write a letter. I gotta petition to see what's really going on." Watch this. "The death of the late emperor your father and our friend of glorious memory." See how he's kissing butt? Glorious memory. "Is one of those events which though distant attracts our notice and concern." Why? He's been notified he's concerned. Why is he notified? Why is he concerned? He's talking treaty. The only reason why the United States of America even has a constitution is because Sidi Mohamed allowed the colonists to start understanding how to gain their own independence in 1774. Go back and look at the records. See Mohammed's in conversation with the colonists. Sidi Mohamed tells them, "Look, y'all want y'all independence? Go for it. I got your back." 1774, they start these conversations about the United States of America staying permanently in the land as being expatriates of Great Britain. So in 1774, they start the conversation with Sidi Mohamed, which they always had conversations, but now the colonists want to be expatriates of Great Britain. 1776, now some of the colonists claim what? Independence from Great Britain. That's their legal authority that they did for themselves. 1776. What happens in 1777? They start to work on their constitution. Who? Articles of Confederation from what's called the Continental Congress. Continental Congress number one, then they got Continental Congress number two. All part of incorporation. They start on their constitution, 1777. They don't fully ratify it until 1781. During this entire time, they're beefing with Great Britain. Great Britain don't want them to have the independence, okay? So 1781, they thoroughly fully ratified their constitution, Articles of Confederation, and put it on the record. They finally send over to Sidi Mohamed, "Hey, man, we got our independence. We got our constitution, which created our state. We're poised to have full powers." If you allow us to stay, can we check these boxes, Sidi? We did everything in order to now create politics, because Moors taught us how to do it over here in Morocco. So we're sending you documentation that Moors told us we had to do to check the box in order to get your undivided attention, Sidi Mohammed. We want to stay. What does Sidi Mohammed say? "No worries. You got that." He signed a treaty. Sidi Mohammed signed a treaty in 1786. But by 1788, George Washington and the Whigamore Party now wants to create a whole new government called the United States of America. They fully ratify a new constitution in 1788, open up their government in 1789. George Washington sends a letter over to Sidi Mohammed, 1789. So they've gone through all this while constantly fighting Great Britain, fighting Moors and the dominion. And now the landlord dies after the colonists with them, all that, for Sidi to have their back to protect them. Keeping in mind, Sidi Mohammed in the year 1778 sent a Frenchman over to petition to help the colonists. You know what that Frenchman's name is? D. Adibert Cailley, from France. So Sidi Mohammed in the year 1778 sends a Frenchman over to be the consular to assist as the referee on behalf of the United States colonists for George Washington, Benjamin Franklin, John Adams, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. France came over to help them deal with Great Britain as the consular and Consular Court on behalf of the United States of America. So France is involved. France brings Spain involved, because France and Spain signed a treaty during his time, and they come together to help the United States of America to defeat the British. Then around 1784, France and the United States, Great Britain, all talked, and they signed a treaty. It's called the Treaty of Paris. I believe it was 1784. So you gotta understand, a lot has happened, and all of a sudden the landlord dies. It's 1791. So let's now get back to the letter, now that you're understanding George Washington's concerns, like, "Do you know how much we've been through to get to this point?" Watch this. "So the death of the late emperor your father and our friend and glorious memory is one of those events which though distant attracts our notice and concern. Receive, great and good friend, my sincere sympathy with you on that loss and permit me at the same time to express the satisfaction..." And permit me at the same time to express the satisfaction. Which I learned the accession of so worthy successor. To the imperial throne of Morocco. And to offer you the homage of my sincere congratulations. May the days of your majesty's life be many and glorious. And may they ever mark the era during which a great people shall have been most prosperous and happy under. The best and happiest of sovereigns, wait a minute. This word accession is highlighted. See, Moors go through what's called an accession. It's called your primo geniture status. And the Moors are putting together governments. Your status is primo geniture. Your status is a lodio. Your status is a lodium. You are the true sovereign of the land, you are always under an accession status. Because you're always in a position of governance, because your job is to govern the affairs of the East East. Earth. As well as the political statuses and natures of planet earth and dealing with your people, so accession is for all Moors. We have an obligation to protect mother earth. We merely come into governance of what? Land, air, and water, that's law, land and water. America as its commonly known contemporary word. Is the oldest side of the world. The continent of America is truly Northwest Maxim. Which is part of the overall land of the Asiatic people. But here in what's called Northwest Maxim. This is the oldest part of the world, Central Mass, Mass, Central America, which is Central Maxim. North America, which is Northwest Maxim, and then you got the South America, right? Southwest Maxim. That they found over two thousand pyramids just in the continent of America alone. Know what I mean, they found in Africa? About three hundred. Understanding when the colonists find pyramids, they tear them down. To build cities. We're in the oldest land, so our job as an accession is to protect mother earth. That's the first government that we, that we come into is protecting the soil. The land, the air, and the water. Let's continue. Why not underline, highlight under? The colonist, George Washington, keep in mind, we're talking government. George Washington puts on a record. That the colonists were under the best and happiest of sovereigns. The Moors of the sovereigns of the land. But Seeley Muhammad. By his decree. Allowed the colonists to have what's called a limited. Privilege sovereign status as well, why? Because Seeley Muhammad adopted. The colonists, that's why George Washington says in his first letter. That the colonists are attachment to your imperial majesty, that's attachment, that's called adoption. Seeley Muhammad brought them into family and gave them some limited privileged sovereign rights for their people, their thirteen colonies. Because he gave them refuge and asylum in Morocco. Because they did not wanna go back home to Great Britain. Let's continue. Okay, mother, you can read that?
The late Emperor, very soon after the establishment of our infant nation. Manifested his royal regard and amity to us by many friendly and generous acts. And particularly by the protection of our citizens in their commerce with his subjects. And as a further instance of his desire to promote our prosperity and intercourse with his realms. He entered into a treaty of amity and commerce with us for himself and his successors to continue fifty years. The justice and amity and magnanimity of your majesty leave us full of confidence that the treaty will meet your royal patronage also. And it will give me great satisfaction to be assured. That the citizens of the United States of America may expect from your imperial majesty the same protection and kindness. Which the example of your illustrious father has taught them to expect from those who occupy the throne of Morocco. And to have their royal word that they may count on a due observance of the treaty which connects the two nations in friendship.
Thank you, mother. This is what George Washington's saying. He's enforcing what? The treaty. Moors been trying to enforce the treaty with these colonists for decades. The colonists like, we don't know what you're talking about. They've all taken death oaths. To not talk about Moors. While at the same time recognizing they wouldn't even have existence in Morocco if it wasn't for Moors. So let's talk about George Washington's teaching us government. What's happening? The late Emperor, very soon after the establishment of our infant nation. So who established their infant nation? The emperor. What does emperor mean? Empire, the land, the land is what established the thirteen colonies. Right there and there, they're admitting on the record, they were infant nation. Of seventeen eighty-eight. No older than seventeen seventy-six when they claimed independence. Why are we going over this right now? I'm gonna pull you in on a quick brief. You see as Moors start to now create their states. And now have to take the United States to the ICJ, International Court of Justice. Cause you know the United States is gonna look at the Moors and say, we still not gonna try to recognize y'all because. If we do that, we know we have to be obligated to the treaties, and we don't wanna be obligated to the treaties because you Moors are supreme. So the United States of America is gonna force us to take them to the ICJ, so why are we talking about this? Here's what the ICJ, I learned about the ICJ. The ICJ always looks at. What was the consciousness of the leaders of the states when they were forming agreements? See, George Washington. Is the consciousness as being the president on behalf of all the colonists at that time. The ICJ is gonna take a look at George Washington's consciousness of what he was saying to Seeley Muhammad. To get an understanding. Do the colonists have sovereignty over Moors in Morocco? Not according to George Washington, cause George Washington's putting on the record through his own consciousness that he's concerned. And that please, Mr. New Sultan, honor the treaty. So guess what the ICJ is gonna tell the United States of America? You remember when George Washington was trying to get the Sultan to honor the treaty? And what the Sultan did honor the treaty? Guess what, United States of America? You might have to honor the treaty too. Even in the twenty-first century. You must understand, ICJ always looks at the preamble. Of every treaty, every convention, and every declaration, as well as letters that go back and forth. Because these are what you call executive orders. This is the consciousness of all the thirteen colonists in this one letter. George Washington saying on the record, he wants the landlord to enforce the treaty. Well, guess what?
This is what the treaty says.
This is what the treaty says. I'm giving the Moors the answers to the test in advance that we have to use these documents. In the ICJ, cause the ICJ has now tried to put themselves, they gotta go back in time and say. What was Seeley Muhammad in the seventeenth century, excuse me, seventeen hundreds? And George Washington talking about in seventeen hundred, they gotta go back and read these documents to understand what was the consciousness. So the consciousness here, I'm stopping you right here just to explain. All Moors gotta understand, ICJ is going to be looking at this. That George Washington on behalf of all citizens, United States of America, Republic. Had to obey the treaties, cause George Washington wanted Moors to obey the treaty. And since Moors extended that, that understanding. That Seeley Muhammad allowed the colonists to be attachment to. The imperial majesty and the dominions, then guess what, it's a vice versa contract. Colonists have to honor it too. Let's continue. Manifested his royal regard and amity. To us by many friendly and generous acts, wait a minute. So therefore. Since Moors manifested royal regard and amity to the colonists, to us, the colonists. Then guess what, colonists owe that back to us. Amity and respect. The vice versa contract. And then must be friendly and generous acts towards Moors. And particularly by the protections of our citizens, who's protecting the citizen, United States of America, Republic? Moorish governments. Moorish governments. Moorish governments, wait a minute. No, but Rali says, I'm gonna leave the Europeans here just long enough to teach you how to run a government. Why? Because the Moors are running government. So as soon as we get back to running governments, we get right back into the primo geniture status. Of now dealing with the colonists of Republican government and Republican government. That's if the United States of America still has a republic government. We will find out when we go to the ICJ. The one thing about it, we know the Moors gonna be de jour, that's a fact, cause we're the sovereigns. So the United States of America's citizens, Republic. Come under the protections of Moroccan governments in their commerce with his subjects. Colonists are in commerce with Moors. And as further instance of his desire to promote our prosperity and intercourse with his realms, whose realms? Morocco's realms. The empire of Morocco. Keep in mind, George Washington's standing on the east coast. In Philadelphia or Washington DC, sending these letters. And he's playing, saying on the record, whose realms? The Sultan's realm, he's standing in Morocco. So how can Moors be refugees in their own homeland? Cause this isn't Great Britain we're standing on. By definition refugee, that means Moors would have to go to Great Britain and step in Great Britain asking for protections, no. The colonists came to our realms. Seeking protections, George Washington says himself. He, the Sultan, that who transitioned, he entered into a treaty of amity and commerce with us. For himself and his successors, who's successors? Moors of the empire. But which Moors? Moors who are part of a state government, who are part of the government, not just subjects. Moorish government. Those are the successors of government, he's talking to an emperor who is now creating an accession to a throne of government. To continue fifty years, so why, why is this fifty years important? Because it's what you call a term. You gotta understand, the colonists signed a treaty of peace and friendship in seventeen eighty-six. It was renewed in eighteen thirty-six. Then they turn around in eighteen eighty-six, would have been fifty years. Eighteen eighty-six would have been the fifty years. Meaning that this contract of fifty years. From seventeen eighty-six to eighteen thirty-six, they renewed it in eighteen thirty-six and changed Article twenty-five. Article twenty-five says. If in fact, after fifty years of eighteen eighty-six, that's your fifty-year time. Either party at that time terminate the agreement. So every fifty years. They're supposed to renew the contract, but if they don't renew it. They're saying eighteen. So we got seventeen eighty-six. Right, eighteen thirty-six. Then eighteen eighty-six would have been the next fifty-year term from here. Right? So now we're talking about from there, you're talking about eighteen, what, thirty, nineteen thirty-six? And then nineteen eighty-six, that would have been under Ronald Reagan, who would have had to renew it the last time. But why don't they ever talk about these other renewals? They always talking about eighteen thirty-six, eighteen thirty-six, eighteen thirty-six. They never say eighteen eighty-six, they always say eighteen thirty-six, why? Because. Everything after that went to an annual renewal every year, an annual renewal. The contract's for fifty years, but it merely says in Article twenty-five. Either the parties can let the other party know they want to create. Initiate an abandonment of the treaty. See, left it for both parties to cancel it. Well, guess what? The treaty is still enforcing the year twenty twenty-one, why am I making, why am I underscoring this? Fifty years. So you gotta understand. The colonists are here on what you call a lease agreement.
Oh, that's what you were talking about the other day.
Yes.
So it automatically, your rent, if you don't sign a ten-year lease, it'll go to yearly.
Month to month.
Month to month.
But in this situation, if you read Article twenty-five of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six, it says. Year to year, it really says twelve months. So you're really talking one year at a time. Ever since eighteen thirty-six, we've been in a year-to-year renewal status. Why is that important to understand? Because the colonists, i.e. the refugees who are chiefly rich in our land. Are here on a limited privileged status. And the only thing connecting them to Moors is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And their constitution, as long as they're a republic. We're talking about that some more. Why am I underscoring this? Because just like any lease agreement. If you fail to renew the lease. Your landlord can put you out with a thirty-day notice. If they fail to renew the contract. I'm talking about physically signing. Versus it just being understood that it's in an annual repetitive renewal, just it's year by year. That puts either parties. And what you calling, a disadvantaged position. Why is this important to understand? Because Moors right now, they're coming into the consciousness of nationality and statehood. The United States of America is only tied to Morocco by two documents and two documents only. Their constitution, as long as it's a republic. And the treaties. And Moors have governance over both. So they've been operating with the Moors as the United States, and not as the United States of America Republic. That's a violation in law. It's gonna become an international dispute for Moors to have what's called a. Counterclaim. Against the United States of America or the United States because they've been acting in a fraudulent position. But don't get me wrong, the Moors have been de facto too. The Moors can have their governments.
That's true.
However. Not for a lack of sincerity, it's because we wasn't dealing with fraud, because we were told we were black, negro, colored. We were told we was African-American by our own. So we got a lot to deal with in terms of the gray areas, it's been, it's been, it's been shame on both sides. Only thing we can do is correct it, get back to what Seeley Muhammad established in the first place. Get back into amity and commerce. And those who don't wanna obliged by the contract, i.e. the treaty. They gotta go, that's on both sides. Let's get back to the reading. And as far as instance of his desire to promote our prosperity and intercourse with his realms. He entered into a treaty of amity and commerce with us for himself and his successors to continue fifty years. The justice and magnanimity. Of your majesty leave us full of confidence. That the treaty will meet your royal patronage also, so he's talking treaty. He wants the new Sultan to enforce the treaty. And it will give me great satisfaction to be assured. Isn't that what the Moors have been telling the colonists all this time? They don't give us great satisfaction, Mr. Colonists, if you would have just enforced the treaty, cause we're talking, we're saying the right thing to you. Under divinity. Uh, consanguinity, our post says, we're saying this right thing to the colonists saying, man, well we. We've been getting away with this fraud for so long, ain't no use in us just saying, we gonna just give up the goods now. We gonna make you Moors fight it out and get your technical natures together. Start right here, that the treaty will meet your royal patronage also. And it will give me great satisfaction to be assured that the citizens of the United States of America may expect. From your imperial majesty the same protection and kindness. United States of America citizens, Republic, come under the protections of Moorish governments. Which the example of your illustrious father has, has taught them to expect from those who occupy the throne of Morocco. Wait a minute. United States of America citizens come to expect. Respect. The United States of America citizens come to expect, respect for the treaty. In order for the colonies to remain in our land. They want the Sultan in good faith to enforce a treaty. While simultaneously the colonies in good faith haven't been doing the same. So once the Moor starts to enforce the treaty, we take this letter to the ICJ and say. Look what George Washington wrote in seventeen ninety-one, he wrote. That the, that the colonists expect for the treaty to maintain the peace and friendship between our two nations. ICJ will say, that's what George Washington wishes you, colonies of the year twenty, in the twenty-first century. You don't have to oblige to the treaty or else.
And they have not been doing that.
They haven't, but the Moors, they're blocking Moors from enforcing said treaty because the Moors been stopping Nobu Druale's wishes to create and enforce the constitution. Let's start right here. And to have your royal word that may count on due observance of the treaty, he keeps talking treaty, treaty, treaty. Which connects the two nations. And friendship, what connects the two nations, the treaty. You gotta understand, the constitution was a birth of a nation for the colonies. But it's the treaty that connected the two nations. Without the treaty, the United States of America, republic, gotta go back home. They don't want to go home because they want to be under a protectorate status, but they reversed it on us. That's what I said. But they don't want to go home, so they, they reversed it on us. And got us thinking. That we want to go back home all the way to Africa while the colonies came all the way from Great Britain into Morocco and got Moroccans thinking they came from Egypt. We have to learn how to run governments in order to help the colonies get back into honor and good faith, it starts with us.
That's true.
It's been over one hundred years and we don't have Moorish governments, why? Because Moors are blocking Moors. That's the truth, those days are over. Moors will now start to come back into the consciousness of nationality and constitution enforcement. Create their states and take it to the United Nations and put their disputes on the record. That's the truth, and that's going to happen relatively quickly. Because we're in the Aquarian Age now, we're in the age of truth. Truth always prevails. Why doesn't truth prevail? It's because someone's blocking the truth, but the truth is always the truth, the truth is you're standing in Morocco, always have been, always will be. Yeah, we say we're coming back to Moroccan states, but we were always Moroccan states. It's just that now we're trying to come back into consciousness, like Noble said. Enforce the constitution, run your government, because we stopped doing it. It's what you call a reinstatement, we're just reinstating something that was already pre-existing and existing. We just bumped our heads. We suffer from cognitive dissonance. We suffer from psychosis. It's always been Morocco, and we ain't never been refugees. Don't let the United States of America pull that, put that banana in your tailpipe, it ain't gonna happen. Not on active Moors watch. Alright. So why did we go through that with George Washington? Because Nobu Druale said, we need to run a government, but you can't run a government unless you have a constitution. And until you have a constitution, you can't have a state. But we need to follow the prophecies of the good brother Nobu Druale. Let's talk about the ICJ. International Court of Justice. What are we learning from the International Court of Justice? We're learning their opinions and their orders. What do I have up here? The case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. Look at what the ICJ said about the United States of America, the United States of America is in. Morocco, most people don't catch that. Active Moors know that. Most people just reading this in general, they start thinking, oh, you mean Morocco way over there in North Africa? No, Morocco's an empire. You're standing on Morocco. We just read that, George Washington admitted that on the record. So the ICJ took a look at the case. What happened, France, just to give you a brief. France brings the United States of America, not to be confused with the United States municipality. France brings the United States of America into the ICJ.
Republic?
Republic or municipality, but when, when the United States of America went to the ICJ, they're going there as just simply the United States of America. France didn't challenge them on whether they were republican or not.
Oh, okay.
You see, you gotta understand, France, watch this. The United Nations. Before the United Nations came together, all the nations in the year nineteen forty-five. To sign off on the Charter of the United Nations, nineteen forty-five. Prior to that, they were what you call the League of Nations, and the League of Nations came together in the year nineteen twenty. Right after World War One. So after World War Two, they said, man, we, us nations gotta get together, we gotta stop this warring, so in nineteen forty-five. They renamed the League of Nations, they, they created now, uh, United Nations. But it's still the same thing, different name. More nations joined in to stop all the warring that was going on around the world. Okay? Nineteen forty-five, United Nations is created. They create the ICJ at the same time, okay? International Court of Justice, ICJ, nineteen forty-five, that's a part of the Charter as well. Because they recognize they needed someone to police the policies of treaties. Okay? Now wait, wait. So the United Nations come together nineteen forty-five. France already has brought the United States of America to the ICJ by the year nineteen fifty. Within five years, France has already brought. The United States of America to the ICJ. So they started taking a look at this case nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-one, and then nineteen fifty-two. They finally come out with a court decision. So what you're looking at right now is France bringing the United States of America in the court to challenge them on what? Jurisdiction. Challenging them on what? Treaties. So we're gonna learn about this, alright? Now, we'll read this. And we get a perfect understanding, why are we going to read this? Because we're talking government, Nobu Druale said, learn how to run government, so we're learning from the Europeans. Where else are we reading this? So we can learn how France got the United States of America to admit some things on the record. As it relates to Moors and Northwest Mexum, so you gotta look for jurisdiction conversation about government. Like I said, Moors have to stop looking at documents and say, oh, that's the word Moor, no, no, no. You gotta look for the Moorish government in these documents. Understand how to enforce your rights through your state. France, the United States of America playing a chess game with a pin in court.
So looking at the ICJ also allows us to learn the language.
Yes.
Of the nations.
Yes, as well as understand what documents are they using as their state of facts? What documents are they using as discovery documents? What documents are they using as exhibits? France, the United States of America started disclosing all the documents they thought was going to support both sides of their dispute. So Moors gotta step back and watch. Learn government of how France was dealing with the United States in a chess game. Why is that important? Moors don't have to reinvent the wheel, when we start going to ICJ, we pick up these same documents and say. We plug and play. We replace our name from France, we plug in Ampat. We use the same documents France was using, we use the same defense that the United States of America was using. We figure out, we look at this chess game, huh? Here's what they were saying and doing, this is how it worked out and didn't work out for them, huh? This is the United States of America was saying and doing, this is how it worked out for them and didn't work out, we learned by watching this chess game. In real time, what took place in nineteen fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, that's the importance of understanding, what are we talking about? I'm going to leave the Europeans here just long enough to teach, to teach you how to run a government. So yes, back to point, I'm going to leave the Europeans here. Just long enough to teach you how to run a government. Yeah, remember now, because of index of wrong prohibitorial, we forgot how to run governments. But wait. You got a lot of unconscious Moors and conscious Moors sitting in governments right now on behalf of the United States of America. So Moors know how to run government. They're just doing it for the wrong side of the equation, they need to get back over here to their Moor states. We got plenty of Moors who know government now. So now's the right time. Now remember, the colonies ran all the Moors out of the seats during the Civil War. It took years before the Moors could get back into a status of coming into the government of the United States of America. But now that they're there, they learn government again, they're doing everything on behalf of the colonies instead of doing it on behalf of their own nationality. And their own constitution and their own states, we got plenty of people know government now. So we can run government if people come back into the consciousness and stop capitulating. Take a little payoff from a colonist who ain't giving them no pay, giving them fiat. And then turn around and tax them to death and get it right back. Okay. So what we're gonna do. We're gonna read seven pages of this, okay? We're only gonna read the part about jurisdiction, alright? So, getting back. To the International Court of Justice reports of judgments, advisement, opinions, and orders. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, so more of their home study, look this document up. August twenty-seventh nineteen fifty-two with the judgment. So what we're going to do is. We're gonna read more or less kind of the preamble, it's not preamble, but it's just some of the statements made on the record. It tells you how the judgment should be cited as follows. So Moors putting this information into documents, this is how you submit it, okay? It's called case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America, not the United States. In Morocco. Judgment, August twenty-seventh nineteen fifty-two, ICJ reports nineteen fifty-two, page one seventy-six. That's how you put it in there, okay? Into your documents as a reference point. Then also you see the French, because everything is in French and English all the time, if you go to the United Nations, everything's in French and English. That's the mandate, everything has to be printed in French and English. That goes to show you how powerful France is with the United Nations, because everything gotta be printed in French.
And they read it in French.
Uh-huh.
In English, and then they read it in French.
That's correct. Okay. So here's how they open up. Economic liberty without any inequality in Morocco. In the General Act of Algeceris. A fact of establishment of protectorate thereon. A fact of discrimination, of validity, of residential decree of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight regulating imports. Council jurisdiction and French zone of Morocco is based on bilateral treaties, most favorite nation clauses, and multilateral treaties. Meaning of dispute quote-unquote. In the Treaty of eighteen thirty-six between Morocco and the United States. So you see how they put Morocco and the United States? They didn't say United States of America, but why? Because even the ICJ uses it interchangeably. But they already told you who the parties was in the beginning, the United States of America doing business as the United States. So ICJ refers to them interchangeably. And you'll learn, learn later on, so does France.
And that's, but they're referring to the constitutional corporation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay? Because they use both names, the United States of America and the United States interchangeably. Rather applicable to criminal and civil matters. Effective, uh, renunciation by other states of council jurisdiction, so we're talking jurisdiction, this, this document is all about jurisdiction. Effect Convention of Madrid and Act of Algeceris on Council Jurisdiction, Custom and Usage. Right of assent. To Moroccan legislation as corollary of council jurisdiction. Assent necessary for application of Moroccan laws. And constant courts, local laws contrary to treaty rights. Friscal immunity is based on Convention of Madrid and Act of Algeceris and most favorite nation clauses. Interpretation of Article ninety-five of the Act of Algeceris. So what's happening here? Immediately the ICJ is already starting to outline what the documents they're looking at. The Act of Algeceris of the year nineteen oh-six is a very important document. Keep in mind, the Act of Algeceris, the Moor study at home, came out in nineteen oh-six. Nobu Druale came out in nineteen thirteen, these are very close timelines. So as we study the Act of Algeceris in another class, we're starting understanding some of the things that Nobu Druale possibly was aware of, alright? So here's your, your judges, okay? In the case concerning the rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. Between the French Republic. And then if you scroll down, it's got a bunch of their agents. And then it start mentioning, and. The United States of America and all their agents. Are dealing with a dispute, okay? The court composed as above delivers the following judgment, so this is the judgment afterwards, alright? So we're talking forty-two pages and all. We're gonna jump down to page fourteen of the PDF and read fourteen to twenty-one. Probably gonna take us about thirty minutes or so to do so. If we have to break this video, we shall do so, okay, because there's a lot of information here. We don't want to try to take a shortcut and skip any of this. So we'll start reading it today, this might end up being a two or three-part series, just to let you know, okay? So we're gonna read this section right here just to get the preamble of what they're talking about. And then after that, we're probably gonna end this video. Pick up on part two of talking about the ICJ. Fair enough?
Okay.
Alright.
I can read it if you want.
Okay, go ahead, Ma.
On October twenty-eighth nineteen fifty, the charged affairs.
Charged affairs. You can say charged, that's French, yeah, go for it.
AI of France to the Netherlands filed in the registry on behalf of the government of the French Republic. An application instituting proceedings before the court against the United States of America. Concerning the rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. The application referred to the declarations by which the government of the United States of America and the French government. Accepted the compulsory jurisdiction of the court in accordance with the, with Article thirty-six, paragraph two of the court statute. It also referred to the Economic Cooperation Agreement of June twenty-eighth nineteen forty-eight. Between the United States and France. And to the treaty for the organization of the French Protectorate in the Sharifian Empire. Signed at Fes on March thirtieth nineteen twelve between France and the Sharifian Empire. It mentioned the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six. Between the United States and the Sharifian Empire. As well as the General Act of the International Conference of Algeceris of April seventh nineteen oh-six.
Thank you, Ma. So let's get, go back. What did we just read? The ICJ is opening up saying, these are the sum of the state of facts. That they're using to examine under what they call the standard of review. To look at these state of facts exhibits. That both parties are putting on the record, France is putting documents on the record, the United States of America is putting documents on the record. So you must understand, as we start to read and comprehend. Immediately, the ICJ is starting to give us reference points that Moors have to start to study. Use discernment to really go back and do research to understand these things, so as we read, Moors should start taking notes. To examine these documents they're starting to make reference to, okay? Let's continue.
In pursuant to Article forty, paragraphs two and three of the statute. The application was communicated to the government of the United States. the application was communicated to the government of the United States as well as to the states entitled to appear before the court. It was also transmitted to the Secretary-General of the United Nations."
Stop. So as you can see, the Secretary-General of the United Nations, United Nations is coming back into the equation once again. They're talking about the Charter of the United Nations. They're talking about the Secretary-General of the United Nations. As you can see, these two parties, states, have a dispute. And who's working as what's called the referee? The referee is the United Nations Charter and the ICJ to deal with these two parties dispute. Moors gotta start understanding international law. How do we deal with the United States of America or the United States municipalities? We're gonna have to take our disputes to the United Nations so we can learn already how to deal with, watching this chess game of how France is dealing with the United States of America. So we can watch as spectators through this document, start learning. That's the purpose of what's going over. We're gonna learn about jurisdiction. It's gonna disclose in this document. As we keep learning, you're gonna find out that the ICJ by default allowed the United States of America to still have jurisdiction over Moors, civil and criminal. You're gonna find out through this document why Dwight D. Eisenhower came back in the year nineteen fifty-six and removed constant court because he had a court order to do so. He had to. You're gonna find out why Moors are still in these municipal tribunals all because of this one document. It is forty-two pages. It's a lot disclosed, and France got the United States to disclose a lot. The ICJ had to disclose some things about the status of Moors in this document. But we're gonna watch it like a chess game. We're gonna use this document to our advantage as we keep studying how to enforce what? What Noble said on how to run a government. Okay, we're gonna stop right there. Okay? What did we learn today so far? We started understanding we gotta make a distinction between Moorish nationals who have a state and Moors that are stateless. We're learning what? That Noble Drualee is gonna leave the Europeans here. So what are we studying? We're learning Europeans on Europeans having a dispute. We're learning from the Europeans that Noble Drualee says, don't let them teach us how to run a government, so we're gonna watch how these governments run and dealing with disputes with each other. Moors have a lot of disputes with the colonists. We're gonna learn a lot. Because everything's about status, government status. So we'll pick back up from the word nation next time we have a video. Fair enough?